Hello, everybody. I'm Arnaldo. We're back with the Northside Community Podcast. And today we have another special guest. This is really important and the timing couldn't be better. Joe Ponce Jr., welcome to the podcast.
And thank you for having me, Arnaldo.
How are you?
I'm doing great. I'm doing great.
Thank you for coming. I know you're busy. So tell us what's going on. We're gonna jump right in. What's going on in your life right now? What are you doing?
Uh, right now, I'm running for city council district two and I'm wanting to make a change for the better. I want to be a voice for our citizens and our small mom and pop businesses.
Okay, so tell us more about yourself and your experience in having lived in Northside. So what was that like?
Uh, I've been living in Northside since I was, or Fort Worth, since I was about 12. I was raised right there on Holman Street. I mean, I really loved it. I went to Northside High School. Although I didn't graduate, I did get my GED in order to hurry up and enter the army, which I did as soon as I turned 17. And then, uh, under the GI Bill for my military service, uh, they paid for my college, which I went to Tarrant County Junior College. And now it's called Tarrant County College. But yes, it's, 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 uh, it's been really exciting. I eat, breathe and sleep Northside. I just, I just loved, I just love the area. I've been on, I've been in business for going on 46 years, Ponce's Transmission. And now, last year, I sold that business to get in preparation to run for this job. And we went to our old building, which was at 1300 Northwest 25th Street. And I'm happy to be back. And one of my favorite things about Northside, especially around 5 o'clock, you go out there and it just, it just smells beautiful. It smells like a, like a giant Mexican restaurant. You smell, you smell all these Mexican foods.
Well, you're on 25th Street where you have Los Sarapes, Dos Molinos, right?
Yes, and, uh, I know them, I know them personally. I know Orellia Sarapi. I know Mrs. Molinas, Mrs. Molina. They've been there for a long time. Her husband, Sacarellas Molina, he helped me out quite a bit when I first opened up. Had it not been for him, I probably wouldn't be in business today. When I first started, Mr. Molina had a lot of business. Anytime he had a, he seen a transmission that was leaking, he'd do oil changes and stuff, and he'd send it to me. So I really appreciate them doing that. And, uh, and and there is a story, a good story about Mr. Molina that, uh, I've been looking for, but he did save somebody from a burning, burning house one time. And he was real well-known in the community, real friendly guy, just as Mrs. Molina. And Mrs. Molinas, Dos Molinas is my favorite restaurant for enchiladas. Whether it's chicken enchiladas, cheese enchiladas, beef enchiladas, they make, they make the best.
I love it. So I honestly, I have to be honest, I haven't really been a patron of Dos Molinas. Uh, but I have been of Los Sarapes because my parents and I, we just love the sazón there. We just love their, the flavor. Um, and also, it so happens that the owner, either she was born in Aguascalientes, which is where my dad's from. So there's also that, that, you know, connection. Um, and it's also one of the most beautifully decorated restaurants and just everything is on point at Los Sarapes. We just love it there. Uh, but with that said, you brought up a couple of, you brought up a lot. So we need to dig into that and then we can move on to the most pressing thing, which is that, yes, you are running for city council in District Two. That's, that's really important. So we'll save the best for last, if we want to put it that way.
Okay.
But I think there's a lot under the iceberg. I feel like you're an iceberg. So the tip is, you know, we see, we see what we see and we see what you're doing. But there has to be such a deep history, like you said, with you and Northside, with you with small businesses, which I can relate to because I recently with my friends, we launched Northside Community LLC, which is a business. And it's been a big learning curve, like what is it like to have a business, a small business in Northside, specifically in Fort Worth, right? Which is growing now. And my question to you, I guess, is this is a starting point. Tell us about the small business community and we can run from there as to like, where is it heading now?
Uh, as far as the small business community, everybody knows, everybody knows everybody. Everybody knows, uh, well, if you need this, go to my neighbor. And, uh, my neighbors are 25th Street Garage. So, uh, if, if I got something that's not related to transmission, I send it to him. I try to keep the business in our, in our community. But yes, our, uh, as far as my business, uh, when I first opened up, I wanted more business. So I wanted to stand out. I painted my building fluorescent green. And at that time, none of the buildings were, uh, painted colorful pictures, colorful colors. And you go to Mexico and that's the way it is. Everybody's got their own, uh, uh, real bright colors. And you go to 25th Street, now, uh, Azalee Avenue, all the businesses are real, uh, they're just real colorful.
Right. And you brought up an important point. And it's the fact that the community in Northside currently, like, there's a strong predominantly Hispanic, Mexican community, right? Am I wrong, or is that?
No, 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 you're correct. And when I first, when I first opened up, uh, I didn't know, know Spanish. The only thing I, I knew was gracias, you know, thanking people. And I would ask people, how do you say this? How do you say that? And nobody ever made fun of me. I actually learned how to speak Spanish in the Northside. And I'm pretty fluent when it comes to, uh, uh, subjects like automotive, because that's what I do.
Right.
But, but yeah, uh, when I, whenever I need to learn, know a word, you know, I ask and they tell me.
Right. Okay. So, small business, I want to go back to that because like, it's a big one. And I think that's part of what perhaps your campaign incorporates, like the message of your campaign as you're running for city council. What can you tell us as to the landscape right now for small businesses? Is it looking good? Or is it headed in the right direction? What is it? What, what are the threats to small businesses? Like, where are we?
Um, you know, I feel that our, our, uh, uh, current person, council person that's in charge of that, he leans more towards, uh, big business. And I lean more towards small mom and pop businesses because, uh, uh, big businesses, they're getting tax breaks, they're getting tax incentives, tax abatements, whatever you want to call them. And you add up everybody that, uh, that big businesses employs and the small business, what they employ. And you could, you could actually Google it and it tells you, small businesses employ more people than big businesses. Uh, and they get all the tax breaks. As small business, we, we don't get no tax breaks.
Right.
You know?
I, I agree with that. So I see that too. I think it's important that you say it out loud, right? Because I think a lot of these things that we see, we don't really talk about. And that's something that I, I like to mention about, and it's probably not just Fort Worth. It's probably very common. Um, there's like this culture of silence where we don't talk about even the things that we're seeing. Uh, but I think it's so important that we, we bring, shed light on it, right? So you're saying, to recap, that there's too much big business happening and they're getting all the support. They're getting tax incentives, tax write-offs, whatever you want to call it. And small businesses are not getting the type of support that they should, even though they're the backbone, basically, right, of our communities?
Yeah, and it is in our, in our community. Like, uh, let's say some of the, uh, big businesses that they're giving tax breaks to, they're giving them to multimillion dollar, billion dollar businesses to come from, you know, out of state over here, under the guise of, uh, given high, uh, high-paying jobs. Uh, I don't believe that's the case because in my community, Northside or Diamond Hill or Brookside, I don't see, I haven't met one person that's employed by these jobs that they're giving tax breaks or tax incentives.
So who's getting those jobs, to your point? Do you think?
Uh, to me, I believe it's the people, uh, over there towards, uh, maybe Basswood, Western Center Boulevard and, you know, and further up north. Because like I said, I have, I haven't met any. Uh, unlike Lockheed Martin or Carswell, what is originally called, they employed a lot of people from our community. I know a lot of them that, that actually worked for Carswell or Lockheed Martin. I think it's called NAS, uh, NAS Air Base now, but, uh, they actually employ a lot of people that live in our community. You see them. But as far as the other ones that they're giving tax breaks, I haven't met one.
Hmm. That's interesting. Okay, so you were in the military. You mentioned being in the military. Is that correct?
Yes, I was in the army.
Can you tell us more about that?
Uh, I wanted, I always wanted to follow in my father's footsteps. He was my stepfather. But, uh, I consider him my father, um, best father I've, I've ever had. But, uh, I wanted to follow in his footsteps. The year he retired was in 1974. And I talked my mom, my mother into signing all my papers to join the army when I was, uh, 16. And as soon as I turned 17, which was the same year, 1974, that my, my father retired, I went into the army. And, uh, my entire term, uh, I spent it in, in Germany. And then, and then when I got out, under the, uh, the GI Bill, they paid for my college. Uh, and, and I went to Tarrant County Junior College, which is now Tarrant County College. So, you know, it did help out a lot. I didn't, I didn't really think, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to be in military. And I didn't know it was gonna have this many benefits. Till today, I still get, you know, benefits from being in the military.
Okay. And what is like a lesson or lessons, I'm sure there's a lot, that the military, you know, gave you that today, you're just like, man, so thankful for these lessons that I got in the military?
Uh, they, they taught me to be on, you know, to be like on, on time all the time. You know, I'm, I'm real, you know, into that. I have to be on time. My wife thinks, oh, Joey, it's gonna be okay. But since I've been in business for, uh, going on 46 years, I think I got, I was late one time. I was about 20 minutes late because I went out drinking with a coworker and stuff and, and, uh, you know, I drank too much. I was 20 minutes late and I almost just stopped completely. As a matter of fact, I think it's been about five or six years since I had a couple of beers. I think I had a couple of beers, uh, maybe about a month ago, I went to Ray's Sportsman's, which is another popular club of the Northside. And that's, that's been my first beer in about five or six years.
Okay. So, I mean, you sound like a really down-to-earth guy, right? And which is very different to have someone like you, a small business owner, military guy, can go out for some drinks with friends in the Northside, um, now running for District Two Councilman. So that, that's an interesting combination because for the last eight years, if I'm not mistaken, we've had a councilman, Carlos Flores, and, uh, he's, in some of these cases, he's run unopposed in the Northside. So tell us more about that. Is that part of why you're running or why are you running? We're now getting into the, that territory.
Well, as being far as unopposed, uh, there is some people that are for him that believe he shouldn't be opposed. Uh, they think that he should just be city councilman. You know, now that I'm running, I see some of them on Facebook. They get onto me, why are you running? You shouldn't be running. Uh, I don't have the experience. Uh, well, yes, I do have the experience. I've, uh, if any of y'all have seen the, the movie Slumdog Millionaire, uh, that kid knew all the answers and they, uh, they thought he, that he couldn't have known all that. But he knew all the answers because he lived it, you know, and I feel that I've lived it. And like I said earlier, you know, I sleep, eat and breathe, uh, Northside or District Two. So I see everything that's going on. Uh, and the, the main difference from, uh, Carlos and myself is, uh, I feel like he's more for the, uh, the stockyards, the tourism, which, uh, yes, I agree, we do need that. But, uh, we need to take care of our residents and small mom and pop businesses first and foremost. Not, not the other, not the other way around. And when Carlos first ran eight years ago, uh, you know, I worked on his cars when he was a teenager. I worked on his father's truck. Uh, but he did contact me and he goes, Joe, I, I need some help. Uh, see if you could help me. And I asked, well, what do you, what do you need, Carlos? Uh, he goes, I need somebody to do the robocalls for me. And I, and I agreed. Uh, I seen that he was running for the streets, uh, better streets, uh, lower taxes, more crime, uh, prevention. And as soon as he won, I believe he only won by 87 votes. So yes, I helped, I helped him win. Uh, but as soon as he won, I, uh, texted him the streets that I felt that needed to be done. I'll get, I'll get right on it. And, uh, here we are, eight years later, those same streets, nothing. So they were bad then and they were, they're, they're extremely bad now. Uh, so that's what I'm, I'm gonna focus on, uh, the infrastructure, streets, uh, and I'm gonna focus on, uh, more, uh, youth programs, um, property taxes. And, uh, I do give Carlos and, uh, rest of the city council credit for giving the 65 and older, uh, a larger tax home exemption, which I believe it was doubled. Uh, but as far as the, the working, the working people, I don't, I don't believe they got a tax, uh, a tax break on the homestead exemption. They do have, he did cut the, the tax rate. But the tax rate to me is, uh, is like a shell game. It's like to, for politicians to pat themselves on the back, oh, I lowered the tax break. But if you look at the, this last tax break they did, uh, last year, they did it with a lot of fanfare on Facebook. Um, but the first of the year, they raised our water rates. At the end, and you don't hear nothing, you didn't, you didn't hear much about that. At the end of the year, they raised the storm water runoff rates. So they're winning our tax rate cut. But like I said, I, I do thank him and the other councilmen for doing that for the senior citizens. I'm a senior citizens. So, uh, yes, that, that did help me out. But we need to do, uh, something for the, the working people.
Right. I'm with you. So it's, it's, for me, it's refreshing, I have to say, to have somebody else to be bold enough to come out and challenge sort of the status quo, um, not only of the city, but specifically of the Northside. Um, I'm from the Northside too, born and raised. And so when I came of age, not too, not too long ago, um, and came back to Fort Worth after college and like living abroad as well, um, I saw things that I wasn't happy with, like the streets, everything you, you mentioned, uh, really rings a bell. I was really frustrated as like, how is it that I've been gone, you know, a decade? Uh, and things have seemingly gotten worse, even though people are paying taxes. Like where are our taxes going?
More taxes.
Do you know what I mean? Like where, where is it? Supposedly, they're supposed to, you know, fix the infrastructure. You know, you should, you should be able to see where your money is going. That's what I say. You should physically be able to drive around, see better streets, you know, no urban blight, please. Plant some trees, you know, like, can we see where our tax money is working for us? No, it's been the opposite. And you, you even said it's sort of like a third world.
Yeah, we're starting to look like, and, and some places of Northside, Diamond Hill and Brookside, uh, they do like, look like we're living in a third world country. I mean, the streets, uh, the streets are terrible. And I believe it starts with the streets, you know? Uh, people have nice streets. They want, they want their yard looking nice. They want their house painted and stuff like that. But, uh, I just feel like, uh, the way our streets, I mean, well, why are we gonna do anything? It's just terrible.
Right. So going back to the point of challenging what's happening, challenging that, right? Like the fact that things aren't getting better. Uh, I do have to say, and I, my question is, I'm leading up to the question, is when people speak up, I, I mentioned earlier, there's sort of like a culture of silence that I've noticed where people don't criticize or people don't bring up points, right? They're afraid to speak up. I sense like there's a fear. And to me, that's a red flag. When you live in a democracy, quote unquote democracy, and people are afraid to speak their mind in the freedom of, you know, where we have freedom of speech and we're protected, I think that's a red flag. And I see that around me. I see that people are afraid to, to point these things out. And I wonder, it's like, is there a retaliation going on? Is there like vindictiveness that happens in the city? Um, and I've come to a conclusion, but before I say that out loud, I'm curious as to, to hear whether you see that or not. What do you see?
I do see that to a certain point. I don't know if, if, uh, if there is any kind of retribution, but there is some small businesses that are, that are worried about that, that they don't want to speak up because of fear of retribution. Um, I don't want to name, uh, names, but, uh, yes, I, I believe that some of the businesses are scared. And then, uh, as far as like the, the taxes and stuff, some people don't say anything because they think it's not gonna help do anything. They think their house is gonna be worth less money. Uh, and, and many of our residents don't even know that you could get, uh, tax breaks through homestead exemption. And if you got one child or somebody living in your house that's disabled, you can get the same, uh, uh, tax, homestead exemption as a 65-year and older.
So that's something that you bring up a good point. We're gonna talk about that with another guest who is a professional in that realm. And we're gonna get more details about how our community members can protect themselves and, uh, when it comes to homeownership or property taxes and all these things. So you bring up a really good point. It's very valid because Texas has like very regressive property tax laws. And so that's something that we need to explore more with our community. But before we do that, I want to go back to, um, your experience with boxing because you have been a mentor for youth, right? You said earlier that you work with youth. Tell us more about that. And we only have 10 minutes.
Yeah. Well, okay. Well, first, it's, it started because I've always loved boxing. My dad used to put, put us as citizens in front of the TV anytime Muhammad Ali was fighting. So I've loved boxing all, you know, all my life. And not just boxing, I love working as a youth volunteer. My wife and myself started, uh, volunteering for the Boys and Girls Club Coming Up Program, which at that time, it was, uh, we were trying to curb, uh, the gang activity. Because when that program was around, there was a lot of kids that were getting killed due to gang activity. And I credited that program to, to being the main reason that gang activity is, is just about gone. There was, it used to be a lot of graffiti, a lot of gang activity killings and stuff going on. And you don't see that, you don't see that as much. A lot of them kids that we helped out are now, uh, responsible citizens. We've got teachers, construction company owners, um, you know, we just got a lot of, we've just got a lot of successful kids.
And how do they feel? Let me stop you there. How do they feel about you running? Because you've been doing this for how many years with the boxing?
Since, uh, 1985.
So throughout the decades, you've been able to mentor and get to know whole families, probably hundreds, if not thousands of families. So, so these are the people that are now seeing you run for District Two Councilman. Have you heard back from them?
Oh, yes, all the time. And they even come visit me at the shop. Now they're in their, uh, 40s. Uh, and they come and visit me. They, they thank us. We had one kid, uh, that I coached in boxing, Artemio Abilis. He was, uh, 12 or 13 when we started coaching him and he was from Juana Huato, Mexico. Uh, when he had his first daughter, he wound up naming his daughter after my wife, Arlene.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, and then as far as the boxing, um, I, I boxed a little bit, uh, myself as an amateur. I did, uh, karate. I did real good, uh, in American karate, but I changed over to boxing and it was just completely different. I'm not putting none of them other sports, combat sports down because they all serve its purpose. But as far as, you know, boxing, uh, I had, I entered three tournaments, amateur tournaments, and I lost all three fights. But I stayed in there. Uh, then I was asked to coach. Uh, I coached, uh, uh, the first kid I coached was Jesse Banda. Uh, and I think he's, he's a police officer now. And then I started my own team. And back then, everybody had their, their team. They were using it to promote their business. I believe you even had a UAW 276, which is a General Motors. And, uh, you had the, all these wrecking yards. They did their business, named it after their, named it after their business, their boxing team. And mine was Ponce's Transmission Boxing Team. And then later on, uh, I had, uh, uh, the Spartans. And then the last, I had the Junkyard Dog Boxing Team, which I named it after the coach, hardest working coach that I've ever known, Jesse Shelby. And he fought the likes of Evander Holyfield, Tommy Morrison, Tim Witherspoon, world champions and stuff like that. And now he's at, he's, uh, he's at Golden Gloves. But yes, I went to Golden Gloves and, uh, and then I moved up the ranks, uh, I became gym manager for the, uh, Texas Golden Glove Gym on, on Henderson. And then from there, they, uh, they asked me to run for president of USA Boxing of all North Texas, which I did. And, uh, and I was elected for USA Boxing and, uh, which was, uh, I really love Golden Gloves a lot more because it's, it's homely. You get to see everybody else and, uh, but USA Boxing, that's the way you get to the Olympics. And I really enjoyed that too. But it was a lot of traveling all over the United States. But, uh, boxing is a good way, uh, uh, to help our youth. Uh, some of these youths start off as troublemakers, being on the street, fighting and stuff like that. And once they get out into boxing, it, it just calms them down. They just want to be out, they just want to be going to tournaments. They just want to be training and stuff. But boxing is, is a really good program to help kids. And that's one thing, uh, that I am gonna push for, uh, youth programs, uh, youth programs, not only because it helps the kids. Um, back when we were with the, uh, Coming Up Program, we had extensive training with at-risk youth. And they told us at that time, which was almost 30 years ago, that it costs upwards of $200,000, uh, to house an incarcerated or a locked up youth for a year. So here we are, 30 years later, it may cost 400,000, it may cost a half a million dollars to house, uh, an incarcerated, uh, youth. So, uh, it does help, uh, saving taxpayer money that way. And, uh, and, and instead of somebody in prison, it helps having an outstanding citizen, you know, out there. So yeah, uh, boxing's, uh, been one of my favorite programs.
Okay, great. So we only have about four minutes left.
Okay.
How do you want, what, what message do you have for the community? What message do you want to put out there? Um, so that people remember, like, what is Joe Ponce, his platform? What does he have to say?
Okay, as, um, first and foremost, I don't think that our residents of our community, uh, and our small mom and pop businesses has had a voice this last eight years. And after working with their children for 30-something plus years, along with my wife, uh, I'm ready to work not only with the youth, but for the residents and the small mom and pop businesses and, and to be their voice.
What do you think is needed? I know you said we need to fix the streets. I said, we need to, I heard you say, we need I know you said we need to fix the streets. I said, we need to, I heard you say we need to work with the youth. How do we get there? And because there's theory, there's like, yeah, we need to do these things. There's talking points, right? How do we get there? How do we get the community there?
I feel that the, the inner city, the residences and the, of North Side, Diamond Hill, Brookside. I believe not, uh, not only me, but all of us. Uh, our community has been neglected. And I think it's time we have somebody in there uh, to help. And I really don't know the procedure because uh, I'm new at this. But when I was elected from uh, President of USA Boxing, a lot of people told me the same thing, Joe, you don't have experience. You need to start at the bottom and go up and uh, uh, but then I had a lot of people pushing me to run for president because I've seen a lot of stuff that needed to be fixed and uh, and our boxing, uh, not just myself, but the rest of the board of directors. We had a good group. And uh, we improved uh, our subboxing association. It became better. And so, yes, as, as a business person of our community and a youth volunteer, I believe that I do qualify. And I'm ready to learn. I mean, how hard can it be to learn, to, to speak up? For, for what's right. Uh, and, and I, and I will speak up.
Right. Sounds good. So, yeah, I, I, I wanted to have you on today because I do see a power uh, dynamic that's kind of not equal, right? When, I guess when people are in, in a position of power for so long, they accumulate more power.
Right.
Right? And I think that's dangerous. And, and I'm not trying to pick on a particular person. Like it's not, this is not directed to Carlos Flores. He just happens to fit the bill, right? But there, it could be anybody. It could be the mayor. It could be another councilman from another district. Like if, if the shoe fits, you know what I mean? Like if the shoe fits, I'm sorry, but the shoe fits. You are accumulating too much power. And if you're running unopposed, I think that's dangerous.
Yeah.
That speaks to a deeper symptom, doesn't it? Of like, where's the capacity building of leadership? There's a lack of mentorship. That is not a good sign. And that's, when I'm looking at a, at a place, at a community where I want my children to be, where I want my nephews to be, I want to know that they have mentors, that there are pipelines, that there are opportunities. Do you see what I mean? And I think, in other words, I think that's what your campaign is running on, is that you're seeing all of that too. And that you're reacting to that and you want to solve a, a problem.
And that's true. Uh, it's uh, as a youth myself, I was helped through uh, youth volunteers that guided me and stuff. And uh, when my wife and myself started volunteering, we, we fell in love. I wish we had more volunteers. Um, but we just fell in love with it. And uh, and we just want to keep going. We just, like I said, not just for the youth, but their families and the small mom and pop businesses.
Excellent. I love it. I love the energy and I love the fighter in you. And I think it's exciting. It's an exciting time. And I think that's what, you know, we're, we're from different generations, but there's so much overlap and there's so much in common. And that is powerful. I mean, the fact that you can uh, rile some support from all generations and all types of backgrounds. I think that's powerful. And I think you're being underestimated. And you're, you're clearly seen as the underdog. Uh, but as you stated today, there's a lot of networks and connections and you have a lot of history. And you have this soft power that is not being recognized. And perhaps on purpose because they, they don't want to acknowledge the fact that you do have more than meets the eye. You're that iceberg.
Yes. And a lot of them, a lot of the youth, you see them on Facebook. Uh, you know, they thank us for, for helping them out, uh, straightening out their lives and stuff. And, and they're gonna support me.
Yeah.
So uh, I feel that winning this election is not winning it for myself. It's winning it for we, the people.
Right.
You know, of, of uh, of our community.
So what can people do? What is the next thing that people can do? When are the elections? Give us dates.
Uh, early election, which is what I recommend, because you could just about go anywhere and uh, and it's just easy to go in and out. Uh, is uh, April the twenty-second, which uh, I believe is this coming Tuesday.
Okay.
It starts. And then it goes on through uh, uh, April the twenty-second through April the twenty-ninth. And the last day to vote is uh, the election day, which is May the third.
Okay, there you go. So you have it, people.
But not, don't wait till May the third.
Right.
I hope that y'all get out there early and uh, let's get this done.
Excellent. Okay. Well, there you have it, people. You have homework to do. Study up on what the candidates are saying, see what you think about it, have discussions with friends and family, small businesses with youth. And hear them out. You heard from Joe, uh, Joe Ponce Jr. And we're so thankful that you came out and made the time to speak with your community, with the North Side community. And we're gonna have this out for you guys to, to listen to, to watch. And we will see you at the next podcast. Thank you so much for joining us.
And thank you for having me.
Have a good one. Adios.